I'll give you fifteen seconds. We're a little bit behind tonight. Ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three.
I would like to call to order the regular city council meeting of the city of Cherryville Monday, August fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. At this time, I would ask everyone to please stand for our invocation by Pastor Zach Christie of First United Methodist Church, followed by our pledge of allegiance.
Let's go to God in prayer. Good and gracious God, we give you so much thanks and praise, dear Lord, for the gift of this day, and Father, for the gift of this town called Cherryville. Father, we pray for each and every one of our leaders. We pray for their wisdom, their insight, and their discernment. We pray for each and every individual who lives here in Cherryville. We pray for their strength, and we pray for their peace. And Father, we pray that as we move forward, that you would continue to pour out your Holy Spirit on all of us gathered here. Father, that we might walk closer with you and closer with one another. For it is in your holy name and in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ, we do pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item to address on our tonight's meeting is our agenda approval. And quickly before we do that, I would like to take just a minute for everyone to please stand. I have Councilman Abernathy that would like to do a prayer for the Palmer-Hustsberger senior and junior family at this time.
Let's throw our hearts in prayer. Heavenly Father, and Lord, we come to you right now. We just lift up our city attorney Palmer Hustsberger. We lift up his father Palmer Senior, his brothers Ben and Tad. Father, we just place them at your feet right now in the loss of their mother, their spouse, Mary Ann Beam Hustsberger. Father, we pray that in the coming days, you would fill their hearts with peace and fond memories of her. Father, we just pray that you would guide them through these coming weeks, months, and this coming year. Father, we know they're gonna miss her. Father, she was such a wonderful lady. But Father, we again pray that they would focus on the good times, the fond memories of childhood and times spent with her. We lift them up to you right now, in Jesus' name. Amen.
We will now move on to item four, which is the agenda approval. And this time, I would entertain a motion from council that we amend the agenda approval to add item seven under citizens to be heard. What is this council's pleasure on the agenda amendment?
Make a motion to amend the agenda and add item seven as citizens to be heard.
I have a motion in a second to amend the agenda to add citizens to be heard. All in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And again, I would ask direction from council on approving the agenda as presented at this time.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
I have a motion in two seconds to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, there is none. Next item is approval of the minutes of A, our city council regular meeting of July the tenth, two thousand twenty-three, and B, our city council work session meeting of July twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three. What is the council's pleasure on approval of the minutes?
The motion that we approve both at the same time, the city council regular session on July the tenth and the city council work session of July twenty-fifth.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve the minutes of A, city council regular meeting July tenth, and city council work session meeting of July twenty-fifth. All in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, and there is none. We'll now go to our next item is the mayor's comments. And let me begin by giving an update on what this council, city staff, and city workers have for new and future projects within our city. James Parker Construction has just finished milling, putting stone down, and paving South Chavis Road. This road was in terrible shape, and the new paved road will be used to drop off students at Chavis Middle School beginning this week. Parker Construction did a great job completing this project. Mike Steele has finished putting stone down on the lot at the corner of Main and Depot, where we constructed a new Welcome to Cherryville sign. Our electric department has supplied power to the sign, and Bean Brothers has finished the brickwork around the post. Once the lot is paved, this will be a great addition to our downtown area. Upgrades are continuing at West Gate Park. The new basketball court has been completed, and the new pickleball court has been poured, and soon will be finalized with striping and fencing. The entry road to the park was in bad shape, and we have found out the cost for repairing and widening the road will be somewhere around a hundred and thirty thousand dollars that we were not expecting. However, the cost of the work will be covered through our city funds. Todd Sosby, Todd Sosby, excuse me, Todd Sosby has been contacted and contracted by the city to begin renovations at Edwards Park. Four new basketball goals will be installed, and the courts will be newly painted with blue and orange colors. Additional plans for this park are also being discussed, and future plans for the park at Jane Street located just behind Truist Bank. Hopefully later this evening, this council will adopt an interlocal agreement between the city and the county, where the county will provide up to one point five million dollars for the construction of a new gym. Once approved, the city's engineer will get the plans drawn for this facility. The exact location of the gym has yet to be determined. Plans for a new dog park and splash pad are being discussed currently, and a location for these two projects are being also considered at this point. The city is hoping for these two projects to be completed within the near future. As you have learned, the city council, city staff, and city workers have been working diligently to provide recreational opportunities to all our citizens and to present our city as pleasing to all who live and visit here. Congratulations go out to our newest part-time city employee, Mr. Richard Eland. Richard has accepted the planning zoning director position vacated by former director Elick Blackburn. Elick and his wife have accepted positions in Boone, North Carolina, where they will be returning for employment. The city will deeply miss Mr. Blackburn, but we do extend a city welcome to Mr. Eland. Our deepest concerns go out to certified municipal city clerk Paige Green, who recently had surgery on her ankle. Paige is projected to be convalescing for at least five weeks. Paige will be sorely missed during this time. Our wishes and hopes are for a speedy and complete recovery. This past Saturday, Councilmember Malcolm Parker and I attended the One Body, One Mission event held at the First Wesleyan Church here in Cherryville. I gave the welcoming speech, followed by a prayer from Pastor Phoe of the First Wesleyan. First Baptist Church praise band provided the entertainment. There was a large crowd on hand, and many of the local churches helped with the free bookbag donations, haircuts, and refreshments. Thanks go out to Kim Aker, Barbara McDaniel, Barbara Curry, and all the volunteers for helping with this much-needed annual event. This concludes the mayor's comments for this evening. We will now go to the next item on our agenda, and that is citizens to be heard. Any citizen that would like to speak at this time may do so by coming to the podium, stating your name and address, and comments will strictly be held to five minutes. Do I have any citizen that would like to be heard at this time?
I'm not for sure if I understood you right, but I'm Sarah Bridges, and I live at three-three-two South Pink Street. And did I understand you say that Mr. Blackburn will not be the code enforcer?
That is correct.
All right. With the situation that has to do with my neighbors beside of me, will the new person be aware that they're to let us know what else going on so in case these people start trying to build back onto their part of the property that, you know, will be well informed? Because, you know, we still have the situation with them people living there, even though the house is condemned and they're living inside.
Any other comments?
No, I would just really like to, you know, be up to date on it so we'll know what's going on in case we need to hire an attorney.
Okay, and I'm sure Mr. Blackburn can relay the situation to Mr. Eland.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Ms. Bridges.
What was that address again?
Three-three-two.
Three-twenty-two, three-thirty-two, South. Okay, next, citizens to speak at this time, Mr. Shrap.
Yes, sir. Thank you. My name's Sid Shrap, and I live at two-ten South Dixie Street. Well, first of all, I'll just, I'll keep it brief, but I'm really, really excited about everything that you all, that the city has got going on these days. I appreciate your update, Mayor. I think the citizens of Cherryville really want to know month to month, just like you did, lay it out in front of them what's coming up. Great things. So, but what I particularly wanted to speak to about was, we've had the mayor and I and several other people, we've continued to talk to Mr. Bob Barker about the cherry trees for Cherryville and how we might move forward with his funding future plannings. So I wanted just to give all of you an update so you know where we are. I have met with David Day, who works under Brian Dalton, and we put together sort of a project plan as to how to approach this. The first, one of the first things we did was to create a scope, and what we think we want to do is to concentrate on four or five thoroughfares through Cherryville. In other words, the major roads that have the most traffic. And we want to first inventory what cherry trees are along those streets. So we're looking at church, First Street, Main Street, Academy, and North and South Mountain. You know, those are the normal entrances into Cherryville from all different directions. So my sister and I, in the last couple of days, we've gotten all these maps, and we've actually gone out and done an inventory of what's in the ground now, what had been in the ground, and maybe things that have died and that we need to replace. So we're gonna be adding all these up, getting back with Mr. Barker about that, and then hopefully he will consent to fund this. So this will not be at taxpayers' expense. This will be something that, you know, he began this project several years ago. I have talked to him just today, and I gave him an update, and, you know, Bob being the businessman, he was, first question was, well, how much is this gonna cost me this time? I said, we're gonna keep it in a reasonable amount, you know. We really want to target the areas that we think will have the most impact when people drive into Cherryville. Also, you know, Mr. Blackwelder, Dan Blackwelder, who is the son of a former mayor, he also, he lives out of state, but he's had a really big interest in continuing this project as well. So with his support, Mr. Barker, Mr. Mayor, David, Brian, and the team, I think that, you know, we may get these cherry trees in the ground by the end of the year. One of the caveats of our proposal that we're putting out is that we do want somebody that can start and finish this within a thirty, or sixty, or ninety-day period. And just roughly, I will tell you, perhaps two hundred. Now, we'll see what the cost is. I know that I've already done some pre-costing this album. It costs quite a bit more than it did just two years ago. Costs have gone up. But we want to put something forward that's affordable, not, that's within reason, and I think that'll have the biggest impact, and then Mr. Barker will be happy to help us with. So if you have any questions, please let me know, Brian, David, we all on the same team together.
Okay, Mr. Shrap, I met with Dan Blackwelder. And at the time I met with him, he had thrown out the idea of maybe encompassing the city cemetery with cherry trees. And at that time, and you were talking about the cost of talking to Mr. Barker.
Yeah.
At that time, he said that the Blackwelder family would be interested in helping with the funds on it.
Oh, that'd be great.
And now, his sister was with him when I met with him in my office. She's married to Dr. Howard Holmesley, the past Dr. Holmesley.
Yes.
And she said, together, I think we can come up with some funds to help. So you may want to reach out to them.
We will.
And the only other comments I would have, I know when we first researched the cherry trees, we knew that the prime months for planting were November and February. That's the best chance for survival for new trees.
Right.
So you may want to keep that in mind. I'm sure you've done your research.
I have done.
You know more about botany than I do, for sure.
I know more about cherry trees than I ever thought I would know. But it's a great thing, you know, Cherryville, we come with our own tagline, our own advertisement, you know, we're cherries, Cherryville. So yeah, I've done quite a bit of research, and I agree with you, Mayor. We, you know, we gotta make sure we get the right ones in the ground. And I would say as importantly, this time, we need to look at some kind of ongoing maintenance program for them. You know, you can't just expect to put cherry trees in the ground and they just live forever. We're gonna need some, you know, whether it's a volunteer organization or maybe part of the city to go around once a year, fertilize, trim, spray if there's any bug infestation, but I'm really excited about this, and I think you all will be really pleased when we get this thing going.
Thank you, thank you so much, Mr. Shrap.
Ask one question. That lot there across from Public Human Home, Public Human Home, and there's cherry trees, I don't know who owns it, but those trees really need to be pruned. Some of them need to be taken down or replaced.
Oh, yeah. So that's what's gonna happen, Gary, is as we're plotting these things on the map, you know, we have the lot numbers, we're gonna be contacting. If we feel like that we may need to contact them, in the case of the lot across from Cordeno Steel Home, we want to contact that owner and say, we know that you planted these at one time, but there's like six or seven or eight dead. We need to, you know, we'd like to know what your plans were. And maybe try to do a, you know, a joint kind of work with them on those, the ones that are planted. They're in great location, and they're right there when people drive into town. But we need to, Carol and I will be going out and doing a few trimming on a few of them, because that's the other thing, you know, you can plant them, but you gotta cut those suckers off the bottom of those.
Yeah, I've been thinking, you know, it's a self.
Well, we'll meet you up there next Saturday.
Can I ask a question too? Because I noticed, I tried to go around and plant a lot of these trees, and I've noticed over there, right back up where we got our new welcome sign and all across the government track, and that may be a train right away or whatever it is.
CSX right away, I guess.
Which it really needs to be cleaned out, but a lot of things about planting and shooting at new trees, you know, I watched my grandpa, they used to stake those trees with their guts and they're gonna grow in this way.
Well, I think that's, you're right, gentlemen, because we've looked at that, those as well. There's several of them that have died. The grass is probably about knee-high around them right now. So, you know, we get our mulch out, and we may go up there and trim around them, but I think, again, that's part of this ongoing maintenance. You know, if we get something going, we get a big planning going, that we put all this stuff down in writing, and whether it's volunteers or the city, we gotta make sure that where we plant them, they're taken care of. They're mulched at the right time, and if we need to, we gotta go around and water them some during the summer. But that's a good spot, you know.
The cemetery liaison I can talk to you about is the trees over there that I was with in May.
That's right. Well, we noted those, like, some of them, you know, they're still hanging on, but they're just too old, we need to go and mow them down, put in new ones. But, but Mayor, that was the other thing, the first priority is we are gonna be looking at the city cemetery, you know, I think that was an agreement that you all did. So we're gonna hit that first and see what we can do there.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shrap. Okay, will, any, do we have any other citizens that would like to be heard at this time? Okay, if not, we'll move on to, which is now item eight, which is the adoption of the interlocal agreement with Gaston County to construct a community gymnasium. And our city manager can lead us through that, and that's on your iPad. Page twenty-three.
Yes, Mayor, Council, this is an agreement that Ray Maxwell with Gaston County sent to me as far as constructing, constructing the gymnasium. And I know Councilmember Parker has made a visit to look at the gymnasium in Stanley, and basically, we're copying exactly what Stanley did. We have the same engineer that is drawing the plans that will follow half, I would say, within a week. And then at that time, Gaston County is gonna enter into this agreement with us, where we can construct the gymnasium, and as bills come in, we submit them to Gaston County, and they reimburse us within forty-five days of submitting the bill, up to one point five million. And we feel like we can, based off the prices we've already received from several contractors, we do feel like we can stay under that money.
Okay, and we, we do, do we have the same plans that Stanley used, or?
We're using the exact same drawings. He's having to make some changes because there has been some building code changes since two thousand seventeen, but we're gonna use the same footprint. It's a one-ten by eighty building, so eight-eight-hundred square feet. It will have bleachers on one side, seats approximately two-hundred-and-fifty people, full basketball court inside. On the other side of the court, there'll be the scorer's table and where the teams sit, but they will only be bleachers on one side of the year.
Oh, it's good.
It's really nice. I think the city would be real proud of it, and they'd just like to invite the rest of this council, maybe they have something to go about, do that with that.
So this actually will be a multi-purpose gymnasium, so it can be other venues.
Absolutely. That's the goal. The goal is to do as much as we possibly can, whether that's volleyball, wrestling, whatever, cheerleading, whatever it might be. It does have a concession stand as well, so, you know, we'll be able to have an event, have concession stand. There is a small office where hopefully when we eventually get our recreation record, that's probably where they will operate out of.
I get a lot of these coaches that work with the small gear.
And if you remember last year during basketball season, we all got hit up extremely hard because our youths had nowhere to practice, nowhere to go. So this is kind of hopefully solve a lot of those problems. And, you know, this is something that we'll have throughout the year. You know, the gym is not just for basketball season, it's summer, every time.
It could be volleyball.
Exactly. And we're hoping that it's used a lot.
Okay, has any council members, anyone have any other questions for city manager in regards to the gym?
And I would like.
Or to the agreement?
I would like to point out, you know, this is something Gaston County Commissioners worked on specifically Commissioner Frayle, he did what the Spring of the Guard to help us get this stuff through.
Decided on the location?
That's still a question. You know, if you refer back to the mayor's comments, we're still looking at some land that a family has approached us about, but either there or Air Moss Park.
You said that one side of Air Moss Park was not big enough. Is there another spot there?
Yes, sir. If you go, if you pull into the parking lot there and you have the tennis courts on the left, the area back behind the tennis courts is big enough to put the gym at. The area that you're referring to, the grass parking lot up there, we can't meet the setbacks up there to build the gym. So what I mentioned, if we do end up building down there, is that we end up paving all that and including that grass parking lot, and that's an additional parking.
Okay. Any other questions from council? If not, do I have a direction to adopt this interlocal agreement with Gaston County?
Make a motion to adopt the, the, the contractual agreement with Gaston County to construct.
Second. Okay, a motion, several seconds. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same, and there is none. Okay, we'll move to item nine, which is an adoption of a contractual agreement with Birch Environmental LLC for the AIA wastewater and water assessment. And again, our city manager will lead us through that, and I believe, is that page?
It's page thirty-five.
Thirty-five to forty.
Thirty-four, thirty-five.
Thirty-five to forty.
And Mayor, Council, we've already adopted several agreements with the DEQ on this as far as where the grant money is coming from. It's a three-hundred-thousand-dollar grant that we receive to do a study on our water and our wastewater system. And Birch Environmental LLC is the contractor that was chosen to do the work, and this is the contract with them. And if you look through the contract there, you'll see the items listed and what each cost will be on a line item basis.
And that's where they, they spoke the lines?
Trying to determine how much rainwater will get into our system, stuff like that. They're gonna also study our water lines, trying to determine what water lines need to be put at the top of the list as far as replacements of those.
All right. We have any questions from council on the contractual agreement with Birch Environmental LLC? If not, I would entertain a motion that we adopt the contractual agreement as presented.
I think the matter is that we adopt this contractual agreement as presented.
Okay, I have a motion in a second to adopt the agreement as presented. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same, and it is unanimous. Okay, we'll move on to item ten now, which is the application process for street closing, adoption slash feast. And we have our planning and zoning director, Elick Blackburn, that will lead us through that.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Councilmembers, city staff, and citizens. Recently, my office was reached out to by a citizen concerning the closing of an unopened street right-of-way. They own the properties on three sides of this right-of-way, and they'd like to have it closed because it's unusable for them, or unnecessary for them. Looking through our files, I realized we did not have any application process for that, nor had we ever received any application fees for such. Now, with the general statutes of North Carolina requiring that we send notices to all budding and adjacent property owners, as well as hold a newspaper ad for consecutive weeks, that runs up quite a big tab for the city and its own merit to close a street or a right-of-way for people. Also, if it's a paved road, that takes that off of our power bill monies from the state every year. So what I produced is an application, submit a checklist, as well as a full-on application for a street right-of-way or road closure. It's just two documents. Now, the last two documents are in conjunction with the North Carolina General Statute one-sixty-eight dash two-nine-nine, which goes through all the requirements that the state has set forth for such an action. And speaking with other small municipal parties around our area, what they're usually doing is somewhere between five-hundred to fifteen-hundred dollars per application. For this situation, I would like to make the recommendation that five-hundred dollars be set for like an unopened street right-of-way or any right-of-way that's not been paid, because there's really not much going on there, it's just to cover. And that would, it's five-hundred dollars plus advertising costs that would be incurred. That way, we don't have to keep changing it every time, like everything else in the world, advertisements are going up, so are stamps. So this would cover city staff time that's involved. Now, for one that has been paid. Now, for one that has been paid, we would suggest a thousand dollars for application.
Okay, I was reading over this, and the only question I had, you said on the one that was paid, but under that item, I believe it's E, it says no street or alley under the control of the Department of Transportation may be closed unless the Department of Transportation consents thereto. So if it was within their jurisdiction, we would not have control then?
We would have book control notice of like one-fifty or anything that's under the North Carolina DOT, those streets in here.
I just wanted that clarified.
Yeah. We can't go into Gaston and close their roads either.
Okay, so your proposal is that the fee schedule be set at five-hundred dollars?
For unopened street right-of-ways and those that are unpaid. Now, if it's paid, we would suggest a thousand plus the advertisement cost.
Okay, does all the council members understand the difference between the five-hundred and the thousand? Okay, I would need a direction from council.
I would like to maybe table this to a work session to give us more time to talk about it, look into it. Really just looking on it, first time seeing it.
I agree. I think that's, I think the fees sound pretty steep.
Yeah, I would like to be to look at it, maybe table it.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to a table, to a work session.
I'll second that. Okay, we have a motion to table the process for street closing, adoption and fee schedule to a work session, which would be August the twenty-ninth, if I'm correct on that. So it would be discussed again at work session.
May I assist Mayor, council? Would you feel comfortable going ahead and adopting the application process and just leaving the fee schedule off until work session? Because we desperately need an application process for people that are coming up here to apply. You see where I'm coming from? Because if we don't adopt that, we don't even have a way for them to apply.
However, if they apply before we set the fee, then that becomes attractive, but they don't have to pay that fee.
I'm in that to adopt the fee.
Hang on, hang on, hang on, and then talk about the fee at the work session.
Okay, so we have the, I don't see how we can even go through the application if we don't have a fee.
As a, I mean, we've closed, I mean, for example, I'll give you one, modern pollinators. Do you remember that? That little section of road out there? We closed that section of road for modern pollinators.
Close one section of church, didn't you?
We did, if you're not. We actually gave that road to a public, it could have been a different.
Through the parking lot.
Same thing with modern pollinators. So when we do that, and when somebody approaches the city and says, "Hey, we want you to either, you know, close this road or designate it basically ours as private property." We've not even had an application process in the past. We've just brought it before council and it's been done. This here is an application process where they fill out the paperwork, they do all that. But in the past, I'm assuming we probably eat those fees. The advertising fees are four weeks consecutive. It has to be advertised every week in the eagle for four weeks. So we eat those fees every time that this happens, like second graders church or modern pollinators. And those two roads, we can't report them on our power bill acts anymore, so we don't get any type of reimbursement for those roads. So that's why he's proposing a higher fee for a road that's already paid, because we lose money on power bill ones at the end of the day.
Okay, well, point of order is we do have a motion and a second on the floor for the, to table it till August the twenty-ninth. The only thing about that that I have any concern over is I don't like to do any voting in work session if all possible. So that's going to throw it into September council meeting before. Unless we do, we can, if needed, we can make, take that vote, but I just don't like to do a lot of voting in work sessions, so. But we step back and discuss the fees a little bit?
Of course, that's y'all's pleasure.
What do y'all think about these, that they've been adjusted down?
Well, I think, my opinion is that our planning and zoning director is looking to the future. And he's saying that it's not always going to be a set fee, and so why not go ahead and set it high to cover it for years to come? But you can always change that fee. So we can look at it that way. You can always.
If I may interject, if y'all allow me to, that fee is to cover city staff time. So it's not, it wouldn't be just me looking at these applications. It would be me, the city manager, our town attorney, Public Works, and if need be, possibly even our city's engineer to cover those. Now, on the unopened street right-of-way, we're looking at kind of minimum. Because we're probably not going to have utilities, we're certainly not getting any power bill monies from it. It's just possibly closing this unpaid, unpaid street. On the other hand, if it is another street that has city utilities running through it, that's a whole of the ballgame, it's going to take up more city time.
I would like to leave a paved road at a thousand, and we cut the unpaid out to a hundred fifty.
And so, I remember from the press here, maybe able to.
In a work session, to give us more time.
Okay. I'll, anyway, we have somebody come in in the meantime, let it be it all.
How often does this happen?
This is the first time I've had it.
Yeah, and it happened in my four years of being in council, we haven't had it happen.
I don't know of about three in the ten years that I've sat here that we've had it, did they?
No, usually cities aren't in the process of closing down streets. They're in the business of adopting streets.
If we don't do something, we're going to lose money if somebody does ask for it.
And we know someone's interested at this time. So that's going to be waiving the fee altogether if we don't make some kind of decision on that. And again, we can, I mean, that's not a big item that would be a lot of controversy. We can still do it at the work session on the twenty-ninth. We could be thinking about it. That gives us several weeks to think about it.
The one that's being considered right now is not being used at all, right?
It's, yeah, completely unopened street right-of-way, just a little sixty-foot wide section.
I think years ago, they had the thought process of cutting a road from Vernon Street to Daleview Road, and they was going to do a development there, but obviously it's never happened without the thought process, and that's why that right-of-way was put there. It's the way they were going to cut a road through Vernon to Daleview.
Are you thinking of my proposal, a hundred fifty dollars for that, is not enough?
I mean, I think advertisement, I mean.
I mean, they could pay the.
Yeah, they could pay the advertisement. I mean, I know exactly what the advertisement fee would be, but I would think that's.
That could be included.
Our media guy, he probably don't know.
I think it's going to be more hundred fifty.
Well, I know, but we were going to say a fee plus the advertising.
Yeah, yeah.
Hundred fifty plus advertising is what I'm.
I think that'd be a fun one for that time.
Okay, but I can go back to point of order. We've got that motion on the floor and we've already got a second to it. So unless you're going to amend it and remake the motion completely, we have to act on a motion that's already on the floor and been seconded. And that was to table.
I'm still in favor of table it to a work session.
Has more freedom?
I'll still second that. Okay, we have a motion and a second to table the application process for street closing and adoption of a fee schedule for our work session of August the twenty-ninth. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor of this motion, please say aye. All opposed? There is none. We'll move to item eleven, which is other business. This time, do I have any council member that would like to bring up anything under other business?
Town don't have a bar shop at this time with Mike being out. And just would like to shout out to all the beauty shops that's keeping all of us in easy. I think they're doing a good job out there.
I'm glad to get him that we bring my.
It's a tough job, but I'd just like to do a shout out for all the beauty shop in town.
Okay. Yeah, but they're covering a lot of the male occupants or citizens of our town. They sure are. So kudos to the beauticians and beauty shops that are covering for Mike Powell, who has some health issues. I mean, Mike Neil, and we're not sure whether he's coming back for sure. Have you heard?
All I know is one thirty dollar problem earlier. Think it was his ankle or.
Okay. Okay.
I want to just take this opportunity to thank Elick for the job, and he's done for the city. And we appreciate that. I know I spent probably more time in his office the last year or so than any other time. Thank you.
Good point.
Been very gracious to work and working with us.
You will be a fireman, I understand.
Yes, sir.
Well, he's definitely, he's putting out fires down here. I need yourself out too before you leave.
Okay, we missed the church, too.
They're a good community.
That little boy showing off his biddies, he's proud of it, you understand?
I've got one question. When you sell the house, does the playground equipment go with it?
It does not trend.
And has it been completed?
It has been completed. It's been played on many times. It's claimed my son as a victim twice now. And it will be moved to my parents' house for their enjoyment.
What about the apple tree that I get the apples off of?
Well, it's gone. It got chipped up by the city workers, but we still have one standing, a Fiji apple, if that's your flavor.
Okay, all right. Any other business from council? Okay, anything from staff?
I will let you know, Mayor, council, that the declaration was declared from the governor for a state emergency several months ago. And last week, we were able to talk to committee reimbursement request to the state. That's ongoing and those have been submitted.
And I think you did have one update. I see former Mayor Wade Straps here. Didn't we find out something about the theater that air condition is going to be replaced?
Yes, Mayor, there are two air conditions that are, heating air units that are out at the theater. And Mr. Strapp and I have been discussing agreement to get that replaced.
Okay. Will that be in time for the next performance?
It should be. I'm waiting on some approval from my board, which should be here tomorrow, hopefully. Then we'll be ready to move.
All right, good then. Okay, anything else from staff? If not, then do I entertain a motion for adjournment?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Have a motion in a second for adjournment. All in favor of the motion, please say aye. All opposed? There is none.
We are adjourned.